Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the June 14, 2017, meeting, regular meeting of West Sacramento City Council, the West Sacramento Redevelopment and Accessory Agency, and the West Sacramento Finance Authority. We are going to start this meeting with a pledge of allegiance, which tonight will be led by Sean Shivers.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you, Sean. All right, the next item on the agenda is presentation by the public on matters not on the agenda within the jurisdiction of the council. So this is a time when folks in the audience who would like to address the council on matters not on the agenda, are there any folks who would like to do that? Seeing none, we'll move on to council communications and assignments. Are there any council communications to report?
Sure.
Here, Councilmember Sandin.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. The West Sacramento Flood Control Agency held a special meeting on May 25, and this meeting was a budget workshop on our biennial administration and operations budget and capital improvement budget, and we did a deep dive into the budget. Phil Wright and Charlene Hamilton from the city staff presented and fielded a number of questions regarding budget details and appropriations decisions. And that's my report. And earlier this evening, a number of us, I think, were in attendance. It was a really well-attended, kind of open house discussion about the riverfront renaissance. I don't know if anyone, any of my colleagues will speak on that, but we just had that at our, what's it called, our, the Public Works, Corp yard, yeah, thanks. And both, it was, it was done in conjunction with the city of Sacramento and then our city, talking about all, kind of all the things from bridges and levy projects and new, new artwork and all, all the great things that are happening along the riverfront.
Thank you. Any further communications? Yes, Councilmember Orozco.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. On June 7, 2017, I attended a meeting of the Regional Sanitation Board and heard a presentation and received and approved unanimously the Regional Sanitation Long-Term Financial Plan, which outlined critical issues, capital funding projection, forecast results, and debt management plan for the, for the financials. In addition, on the same day, the River City Regional Stadium Finance Authority met in chambers and approved the budget for the municipal and administrative expenses for fiscal years 2017 and 2018, and received a presentation of the Treasurers Report for Calendar Year 2016, as well as an informational presentation by the Rivercats on the status of the stadium, specifically stadium operations and the business plan. The bottom line is that business is going well and finances are strong. The presentation covered the fact that they're refurbishing the concession stands, and now we'll have more of a, a new storefront look, as well as planted vineyards in the stadium, which is very unique and probably one of the first of all stadiums, which is very cool, through a partnership with Bogle Vineyard. Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protem.
Thank you.
Councilmember Legesma. Thank you, Mayor Protem. This past Monday, the 12th, was the meeting of the Yolo County Transportation District, which I attended. A couple of areas that we covered, we did pass the proposed preliminary budget for Yolo Bus, which included, we also included with that vote some policies around the use of unrestricted reserves, as those are continuing to be used to balance the budget at the YCTD. But, but so far, I should say it was unanimous vote, we, we approved both the budget and that policy, and I think by most part, we're pretty happy with the budget where it is and where they're going, although ridership remains down, which is a concern, and there's things we still need to do this year to kind of further our, our suggestions that we had a couple of months ago on things like Riverfront Shuttle and those types of things. So we'll continue to work on those items, and we could always go back and amend the budget should we find that money there. The other item we took up was the item regarding the completion, or I should say, the development and completion of the Yolo County Transportation, I'm sorry, Yolo County, trying to get to my agenda, a county-wide transportation capital improvement plan. This was in development for some time by staff for the last few years, but as, as you may know or be aware, last year, that was tied to some county representatives wanting to look at a county-wide tax to support just a plan, and as we were already on our way with Measure E, and Woodland was already on their way with their measure, that didn't quite, quite come to fruition. However, it's with the passage of SB 1 and other infrastructure projects coming, hopefully from the federal government. I think at the urging of city managers and others, including ourselves, the board, we felt it's best just to have a transportation plan in place, capital improvement plan, identify projects that are county-wide important. So we did vote to approve, they moved forward, and we also voted on a subcommittee to guide staff on that, to make sure policies are met. All policies will come back to the board, so that way all board members, all jurisdictions will have a say on what priorities are there, what policies are laid in. But, so we're, the subcommittee we made up of Councilmember Rodriguez, who will be the incoming chair of the Transportation District, and current chair, Don Saylor. But again, we will have processes, we'll be able to check on, on the progress of that. They foresee that being done, I think they kind of gauged it around six to eight months, but we had urged them, let's try to get on the six side, let's over, under-promise and over-deliver, because we know SB 1 money is starting to roll in, and who knows what happens on the federal government. We want to make sure the county is ready, where there's funding opportunities, grant opportunities, we want to be ready with a plan. So that's my report for today. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Legesma. All right, I have two quick items. The Air Quality Management District met today and adopted a budget, $6.3 million budget, balanced budget, and also awarded the clean air funds to projects that apply. This year, there was no applicant from West SAC, but a lot of good projects that were approved. So the second item is I attended a New Cities Conference with the mayor last week in Incheon, Korea, and this is a conference put on by the New Cities Foundation, which was based in Paris, but it's now based in Montreal, and the object is to gather NGOs, mayors, and technology into a two-and-a-half-day conference to talk about smart cities and what new cities are going to look like in the future. The, it was kind of unusual, because the, there was probably only a handful of Americans that attended this, but there's folks from all over the world, Africa, Russia, Europe, had a good conversation with the mayor of Condahar, and just a lot of people, and we saw that there's so many cities in, in the world that are moving toward some type of thinking about smart cities and different ways of approaching, and it was really, it was a good, good mechanism to, to network with folks and also to see what, what has been tried in some areas and what works and what doesn't work. So I was selected to sit on two roundtables. One was Better Mobility for Healthier Cities, which is kind of along the line what we're doing here in terms of some of the active aging we're doing with the Age Friendly Committee and the Parks and Rec and Bicycle Paths, all that really coming to play. And it really does come down to having a variety of mobility options for folks, including walking, and I know there was a couple of protesters that were really focused on having a walkable city, because there's a lot of movement toward AV automated vehicles, but they're saying, well, what about walking? So there is a concentrated effort to make sure that walking is included in the list. And the other panel I was on was using IoT to access urban essentials. So that's basically the Internet of Things movement and the use of sensors and the collection of data, and see how that helps to help plan a city. Now, this was held in Incheon, which is, it's kind of a, it's a separate city, but it's next to Seoul, and this city was actually built starting in 2009. It was a totally planned city, and it was, you know, 50-story buildings, a number of 50-story buildings, just massively, and there weren't a lot of people there, and I think all the folks in the conference were saying, well, where are all the people? Well, they're not there yet. It was kind of like a city that they built, and they're waiting for people to come, including businesses. We had a chance to visit the port, and they have a port that's totally automated, the cranes are all automated with the identification of the containers, so you see these robots basically moving containers all around the port. Of course, you know, they don't really need to worry about union issues, which, of course, we, we have good relationships with the unions here, so, you know, they're doing a lot of things that just weren't real practical here. So we had some technology presenters, Uber was there, Intel, Ericsson, Cisco. I had a good conversation with Ericsson, who produces the communication devices that basically underline a lot of the cell work. And so there's a movement now to go 5G, which is a, the next phase of cellular communication, which proves to have zero latency, which, which means that you have no delay in the time the sensors hit and the data hits. And so they're looking at rolling out 4G in areas to help facilitate automated vehicles, autonomous vehicles, because autonomous vehicles need 5G and that type of fast communication to be able to respond to each other and respond to the road and that type of thing. And I had a good conversation with Ericsson about, you know, just kind of the broadband work that we're doing here, how to roll that out into underserved areas, you know, what does it look like to have, for example, broadband as a utility, and how, how would something like that work? So there's a lot of, I think, promising conversations we might be able to continue with, and they work with Eric, with Verizon or AT&amp;T or wherever, they're kind of the, the infrastructure that's behind all this. The cell towers now are going on to light standards, they're very small, 5G, so we're not going to have to really worry about cell tower transmission, it's going to be basically on, on light standards. The mayor participated, he's actually a panelist on a, I'm sure he's going to report out when he's back, the Crowdsourced City. We had one presenter who has, is out of Britain, who is using an application for cities to crowdsource projects. For example, if you want to put a park in, how do you use crowdsourcing? How do you get private sector money? And the public sector money at $100, $50, $10 a pop to help augment putting infrastructure in. And what it does is it creates, you have more avenues for collection of money, you also have more buy-in. So Christopher and I both met with him, and I'm sure Christopher is going to be following up when this is done. Data seemed to be a big issue, collection of data, refining the data, making sure data's consistent, so in all these, use of this technology, which isn't the end-all, because you still have the design aspects of it and the planning that go into smart cities, if you are going to use sensors and the different types of data collection, you need to look at how consistent is the data, then how accessible it is to others to use. One of the best examples, I thought, of smart cities was Christchurch, New Zealand, and I passed out to council a jigsaw puzzle that the mayor of Christchurch and her staff prepared. And this kind of goes through all of what goes into smart cities, so you'll see that open data is just a factor of that, or a component of that. You also have metrics and indicators, so you have to decide, you know, what do you want to accomplish? What do you want the city to be? So you have to get into goals and aspirations of the city, you have to figure out what, how do you make those, how do you make, bring those goals to reality, and then what metrics do you have to indicate whether you're being successful or not, and then how do you measure that? How do you collect the data? Let's see, there's also, I mean, there's, there's a number of different things, there's agile development, which I think we went through with, with the Code for America, so we're, I think we're just right on track with, with this. It's, a lot of it is just kind of pulling it together at this point. Let's see, what else? I think that's it. We, we did have a good conversation of seniors, though, and that, that seemed to be kind of a common topic, is, you know, the, not all the world is aging. I mean, the only place I saw where it's not aging is the Middle East, and there's obviously reasons for that, because, you know, we've got wars. But most other industrialized country now, they have an aging population, so they're all starting to look at, mobility is huge, and what to do about seniors as they get older, how to keep seniors engaged, so all, it's all this stuff that we're working on here. So there's plenty of follow-up after this. We have one Israeli company that Christopher and I both talked to, and what he does is it's an application that basically scours social media and all the data within a geographic area. For example, he can limit it to just West Sacramento, and through that, he runs it through Watson, which is an IBM artificial intelligence facility. And what that does is it gives back sentiment of what is happening in the city, and he gave us a demonstration of, you know, what do people think about the parks, how, what do they think about the roads? And just all this stuff that we typically would go talk to people or get a survey, this is all stuff that you can glean just from people working the network. And it's funny, he, he showed the, the sentiment of West Sacramento in general, and it was very, very positive. And he said, I don't really see this in cities. So, you know, it, it kind of confirms, I think, what we've, we've seen in polling, but this is something that, and he's kind of, it's kind of in development mode, and I think he's looking for a city to help roll it out in the US, and so Christopher and I both talked to him, and we'll follow up with staff with this. He actually is, works out of the Bay Area and, and in Israel. So this would be something that, you know, there's a, a public face and a management face that would really help see, you know, be a good indicator of what we're doing, you know, problems that emerge, you know, for example, we talked about kind of having some precursors to police enforcement and 21st century policing. Well, this would be a tool to be able to see sentiment, and so if there's something developing, you'd be able to pull that out of it. So it was a really good conference, got a lot of follow-up work to do, and I'm sure I'll be, John, I'll be meeting with both you and Marty and Christopher as well to kind of fully debrief you on this. So thank you for allowing me that time. All right, the next item is the appointments, council appointments. So I have a notice here from Christopher that he is hereby appointing Councilmember Sandin as a city's board member and director, as her alternate for the Yolo Sub Basin Groundwater Agency, which was established pursuant to Resolution 17-20, way adopted by the council on April 19. So we have a nomination, do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a second. We have, so all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, hearing none, motion passes. Congratulations.
Thanks.
All right, on to council community relations, so we are happy to present a presentation to Sean Shivers, recognizing him, and we are going to have Councilmember Sandin and Orozco present the proclamation.
Can I make the motion?
Oh, sorry, yes. We have a motion?
And a second.
We have a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, hearing none, thank you very much. All right, would you please, Sean, please come on up to the podium, and I'll meet you there.
Congratulations, Sean.
Thank you.
This is Sean Shivers. We should be so proud of him here in, in West Sacramento. He is one of the, he's the only Californian under 18 that's on, going to be participating in Team USA this summer, playing basketball. He leaves for, I think, Barcelona, Spain on Monday? He leaves on Monday. He's been, he's been training, he's a point guard, and he's in the Engineering Academy at River City High School, and he has been playing basketball since he was five in the West SAC rec program. So we should be, and we are so proud of you. We look, he was chosen, it was really rigorous, it was based on athletics, leadership ability, character, and academics, and so out of the only, the only student from California, we look forward to hearing from you and seeing how it's going, and we want to present this proclamation, and we're commending and congratulating you.
I'd just like to thank my family and friends for supporting me through, like, good and bad, and the, my coaches for getting me where I am right now, and the city for making me the young man I am, and I can't wait to go support West Sacramento the right way.
And he was here tonight with his, his mom, Alicia Cruz, who's a trustee on the Washington Unified School District Board, so congratulations to the family as well.
Sean, just a couple of words, best of luck to you, congratulations on being selected, but best of luck to you in Barcelona, you do make the community proud, and we look forward to hearing from you and how the progress goes. I know we'll be getting some updates on Facebook, whatever, from mom, but, but good luck over there. Thank you.
And let me just add, as you know, as a mom, I can only identify with your, your mother and how proud she is of you, and I look forward to my sons, my two young sons and my daughters, looking at all the wonderful things you do and representing West Sacramento and making all of our kids proud, being a role model to the community. So go out there and have a great time and do great.
Congratulations, Sean, and thank you for representing West Sacramento, and have a great time in Barcelona, it should be fun. All right, on to the consent agenda. Are there any items that any council members would like to pull for separate consideration, or is there a motion?
I have a quick question on item three.
Okay, item number three, any others? Okay, so.
Just a, I think you're just making sure we're reading this, Paul. On attachment three, I think the total is, sorry, I'll let you get there. This is pretty minor, but I just want to make sure if we pass this that we get, it's correct in the proceeds of taxes. Okay, you saw that. It's, I believe it's 56 million, not 56 billion. Is that, is that, do you see that?
Yeah, that's correct.
Okay, okay, so just taking off the last three digits. I would love it if it were 56 billion.
I know.
Okay, so just take off those last three digits.
So as corrected with the last three digits taken off.
Okay, because it matches the page before. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Any other further items? All right, seeing none, is there a motion for a run to consent?
I'll move the recommended action.
I'll second with that, just one correction on attachment.
Okay, so we have motion to approve the consent, second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, hearing none, motion passes, thank you very much. All right, on to item number 13. This is the continued public hearing in series of Resolution 17-43, increasing water, sewer, and refuse collection rates. Mr. Wright.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor Protem, members of the council. Natish Sharma with the City Finance Division. Today, we are requesting the city council to conduct a public hearing, continued from May 24, 2017, find the levy of the proposed rates exempt from CQ and approves Resolution 1743, increasing the water sewer refuse public utility rates. Next slide, please. On June 20, 2016, staff presented to council a draft water master plan and a sewer master plan. In that draft, we also presented a list of guiding principles that will, that helped us design the utility rates. A complete list of these principles are included in attachment three of your report. On December 14, staff presented a financial plan on the proposed water sewer and refuse fund. The financial plan was based on certain factors to ensure that the current proposed rates cover the current expenditures, meet the debt service covenant requirements, have adequate funding for capital projects, and ensure that each utility fund is balanced and not subsidized by general revenues. Since December 2014, December 14, 2016, staff has been in front of council a number of times to present the master plan and its cost in relation to the proposed rates. On April 4, 2017, staff mailed out the Proposition 218 notice to all property owners regarding the upcoming water sewer and refuse rate increase. Next slide, please. This slide illustrates the total proposed increase for each utility rate for typical customer on flat water rate. Beginning July of 2017, the city will provide flat rate customers with meters already installed, a comparable bill to illustrate the water cost based on flat rate and commodity rate. A minimum of three months of bill comparisons will be provided before a customer is transitioned to a metered rate. The refuse charge, charges have a one-time substantial increase in the first year to offset the cost of providing services, eliminate the current deficit, and also the subsidy of our general revenues. As of date, we have received 79 protest letters regarding the increase in utility rates. On May 24, 2017, due to, due to a legal requirement of the publication of the public hearing, the city council conducted a public hearing and continued the resolution till today. This concludes my presentation, I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
All right, any questions, Mr. Sharma, before we open up for public hearing? All right, seeing none, thank you. Okay, so we're going to open up the public hearing. This is a time when folks in the audience and the public would like to address this issue. Seeing none, public hearing is closing, closed. Now, back to council for comment or a motion.
I actually have one question.
Yes.
Mayor Protem. Mr. Sharma, approximately what percentage of households have been moved over to the metered rate at this, at this point?
Actually, let me see, we have 80% of meters installed, but we haven't transitioned them over yet. We are waiting for this new rate to be in, in place, and then we're going to start transitioning.
What's our timeline?
We actually going to be doing, starting this fiscal year, by 2019, we're hoping to have everybody transition to the new metered rate.
Okay, thank you.
All right, any further questions? Yes, Councilmember Legesma.
Yeah, I just have a comment, and I know we've seen this, this is just a comment, Mr. Sharma, so. We've seen this a number of times, and I appreciate staff being diligent on all, on all the answering questions and all the reports you've provided by way of, we've got, by way of all the reports and the, and the capital improvement plans you've, you've outlined, and I think for the first time in some time, this council has really responded with the curiosity in making sure that we understand the basis for these changes on both the water and sewer, and I think we've exhausted the questioning, we can go, we firmly understand the need to increase rates over this, sort of the financial picture of both these areas requires us to make this move, but I don't want to dismiss or not take into account that the fact that we did get protest letters, that folks are going to feel this. It's not, I think it's, it's not something that I take lightly, that, that we have to make these, these, these changes, but we do, you've done a terrific job of explaining those to, to us, this council has done a great job of asking the tough questions on why we're, we have to fund certain things, how we're going, the methodology we're going to use to make sure we're encompassing the costs that we're basically have to cover. So again, I, I think it shows good public discourse and, and process to get to this point, but to the residents, we understand this is certainly, people are going to feel this over the next few years as they start to see their water rates increase, and it's, but it is necessary. We have infrastructure that needs to be financed and funded, I should say, and, and cost covered, and that's the bottom line for the rationale, at least for me on this. So I want to thank staff for all the work on getting us to this point, and thank council as well for your leadership and for being thorough, and again, your curiosity and asking questions that maybe we hadn't really, we've taken for granted before, so thank you.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protem. And I am not going to reiterate, but rather echo my colleagues' statements. My very first meeting being December 14, 2016, and this coming up before the council, and, you know, coming from a, a household where we were on fixed income and unlimited income, where $3 does make a tremendous difference every month, and having the sensitivity and understanding that many of the residents of West Sacramento are going to find this problematic. With that said, understanding that it is necessary and unavoidable because of our city's needs and the fact that we put this off for so long, and now need to address it, you know, I am going to express my, my support for this movement, and will remind our community that regional sanitation does offer a subsidy for people who qualify, up to $150 a year, and I would really like West Sacramentoans to take advantage of, at least trying to figure out whether or not they are, they can qualify for that assistance. And if you look under regionalsan.com, there's more information on the website. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, and I can concur with Mr. Legesma's comments as well, and I appreciated that we started this review back, as, as mentioned, in July, so we had time to look at kind of all these, all the options we could, and it's our responsibility to have safe systems here, and so I think we're balancing safe systems here. And so I think we're balancing the safety and then trying to come up with a rational approach to having to increase the fees because they do, is a self-supporting kind of, kind of program. And it's, it is, it is what I, my favorite, one of my favorite words these days is sobering. It's, it's sobering that we're having to do this, but we still are competitive. If you look at other surrounding cities, I think we've done, we're doing a lot, to the staff's credit, doing a lot to contain costs and, and doing what we, what we really need to do. So, I appreciate the, the hard work and the heavy lift here. And I do thank the, the residents and businesses here in, in West Sacramento for understanding that this need.
Thank you. Yeah, I'd like to echo the comments from my colleagues. The, we, it's, the, we all, I think we all understand what the impact even marginal increases have on folks with fixed income. And we really try to limit that as much as possible, but we do need to provide water and sewer services. And I think our discussion over the course of time has been to kind of look at the facilities and make sure that we're not overbuilding, making sure we're just building according to our needs, no frills, just do the job, and, and that's it. Because that's important, because the more you add on to infrastructure, the more it increases costs. And we do, we are still very competitive. We're, we're lower than Davis, Sacramento, Woodland, Oak Grove, and Lincoln as well. So, there's a couple jurisdictions in area that are a little bit lower, but we don't really know why they're lower. And they could be looking at fair, these kind of increases anyway, because eventually you've got to address your water situation and, and your facility. So, thank you for your work and, over the course of time, and to be able to explain this. And hopefully, we'll be able to reach out to the people of West Sacramento and help them out. And this subsidy definitely is something that we, we have an ability to get that out to people if they do have questions. They are, I imagine it's income qualified to be able to access that and to help the folks out. All right, thank you. All right, so we, there is an action, recommended action here. Is there a motion?
So moved.
You have a motion made?
I'll second.
There's a motion made. Second, on the recommended action, all the, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, hearing none. Motion passes. Thank you all very much. All right, on to item number 14, which is a public hearing and first reading of ordinance 17-6, amended the zoning ordinance. This is municipal code Title 17, to implement the general plan 2035. And this is Mr. Laffney.
Good evening, Mayor Protem, Johansson, and members of council. Up for your consideration and approval tonight are proposed amendments to Title 17 of the municipal code to incorporate the four new general plan land use designations into the zoning ordinance. These changes were brought, these changes were brought before city council at the previous council meeting on May 24 as an informational item on the consent agenda. So, staff will be undertaking a full zoning update starting this summer. That's probably going to be about a year-long process before it'll be completed and adopted. And in the interim, there's nothing in the current municipal code for these, these four new land use designations. And that provides uncertainty to property owners, and it's a little bit of limbo for properties that are now in these new general plan land use designations. There's nothing in the Title 17 that addresses that. So, the amendments proposed tonight in ordinance 17-6 will bring this certainty in the interim until a full zoning code update can be completed. So, the four, the four new land use designations that were approved in general plan 2035 are the mixed-use neighborhood commercial, mixed-use corridor, the commercial consolidation of the three commercial zones into one, and the medium-high density residential. The new mixed-use zones and the commercial zone are primarily along the arterial roads, Jefferson, Sacramento Avenue, and West Capitol. And they provide a broader mix of uses and densities than what was previously provided for. So, for, for outreach, the planning division hosted a public open house in March in partnership with the West Sacramento Chamber of Commerce. That was a very well-attended event, and we had some support from the Chamber of Commerce for outreach. All affected business and property owners were sent notices in the mail about this open house. In addition to the open house, this item was brought before the planning commission three times, twice as a workshop, and then also finally as a, a public hearing. At the public hearing, planning commission passed resolution 17-1 PC, recommending that council approve ordinance 17-6. This concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Okay, any questions, comments before we open up for public hearing? I've got just a couple. The, so the Brew Pub designation, would that include a distillery? Because I know we've had some interest in expanding.
Yeah, we're, this is primarily for, for the allowing for brewing of a beer. We'll have to take a more comprehensive look at distilleries and wineries and wine tasting when we do the full, full comprehensive zoning update.
Okay. And the other point on the mixed, riverfront mixed-use, with that, I think we had a conversation in the past about maybe the peeling station, hydrogen station, would this still allow that?
So, for this, for what's in the ordinance 17-6, we only addressed the four new land use designations. We didn't address the riverfront mixed-use waterfront zone. That's something we can look at further, at the, do a full update. But for this, this, we only looked at the four new land use designations.
Okay, thank you. All right, all right, so we're going to open up to the public hearing on this matter. So, this is an opportunity for folks in the audience to bring any issues forward on this particular item. Seeing none, close of public hearing. We'll be back to council for questions, comments, or motion. Councilmember Sandy.
I just think it's, it's important to move forward for the reasons stated, so the landowners can have some certainty in advance of the zoning modernization. So, I'm supportive of this.
Okay.
I have, I have no comments.
Okay.
But I, I do want, I'm glad the outreach included the chamber. I know that was something I'd heard a couple of weeks ago about making sure that, that these types of changes in ordinances that we connect a little more with the business community. So, I'm glad that that occurred, and I appreciate the work being done on this. So, thank you.
Great, thank you. All right, is there a motion on this item?
So moved.
Second.
Motion made, second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, hearing none. Motion passes. Thank you. Right on to item number 15, consideration of resolution 17-17, approving the infrastructure financing plan for the enhanced infrastructure financing district number one, and authorizing certain other actions related thereto. Okay, Mr. Bloomberg.
So, tonight, in asking the council to approve resolution 17-17, we think it's the first time that an infrastructure financing plan's been approved in the state under the EIFD statutes. So, it's, it's nice to be number one. But it, it's not the last action. So, assuming the council approves the item tonight, it would go to the public financing authority on June 28. And the financing authority would actually approve the ordinance that would form the district. This item was workshop, both with city council and with the public financing authority. We've tried to incorporate those comments into the final version of, of the plan. I would say that we also had lots of comments from the public, and probably had between 25 and 30 phone calls. There was, because we've, we sent notices out to everyone within the district. And it was interesting that 90% of the calls were about, is this a new tax? And we had to explain that this is, this is right, right, and until 2037, it's the money that comes back to the city as measured, like measure G. So, it's a portion of the local-based tax, and it's not a new tax on them. And so, after that, folks said, well, what are you going to do with the money? And so, we, we pointed to the, the attachment to the, to the plan that shows the, the list of projects. And finally, I'd say that we did clean up the list of projects to note that, that all of those projects are potentially eligible for EIFD funding, again, subject to, to future decisions of the city council. So, with that, I don't have any additional comments. I would be glad to answer any questions you have.
Okay, questions for Mr. Bloomberg?
Just a comment. Thanks to Mr. Mayor Protem. I appreciate you giving the feedback on residents' concerns about this. I think we first started talking about the timeline for this. There was concern by the council that that, that there would be a lot of misunderstanding about kind of what, what it is we're doing. So, this is kind of take that as a cue for us to, to find communications to residents or to property owners as we move forward. But I'm very happy to see this on our agenda tonight for approval and, and the resolution. I know there are a few more steps to go, and the public financing agency, I think, has to, has to ratify this approval, correct? So, but thanks for all the work on this and getting us this far. And again, I just reiterate the need to make sure we talk to property owners or find a way to communicate with them about exactly what we're doing, and that this, this council has done a very good job of communicating our intent on these sorts of spending measures and sticking to them. So, we'll just have to make sure we get, we're very clear on that. So, thank you.
Thank you. Further questions, comments? Yeah, thank you for bringing this forward. It's exciting to, to be the first. But I think, I think you're right that any kind of discussion of increment financing tends to be a little bit of a difficult subject to the general population. But I think, you know, continuing to outreach what this is, and then what the money's going to be used for, I think that kind of helps a lot of folks, you know, get behind something like this. We've seen this with our measures, tax measures, that if, if they know what the money's being spent, and we hold to our word that it's going to be spent that way, I think that folks in general, I mean, there's going to be detractors, but the folks in general are okay with that. All right?
I'll move the recommended action.
Okay, we have a motion for the recommended action?
I'll second.
We have a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, hearing none. Motion passes. Thank you all. All right, on to item number 16, consideration of resolution 1733, authorizing the execution and delivery of a first supplemental fiscal agent agreement, a bond purchase agreement, and a continued, continuing disclosure agreement, authorizing the issuance of special tax bonds, approving the form of the official settlement and the distribution thereof, and authorizing other actions related to the community facilities district number 27. All right, so, Mr. Bloomberg again.
So, I, I think the, the council is comfortable with the process of issuing debt, and the, this is no different from the past financings we brought before you. It is a new money issue, and the report clearly points out the projects within the Bridge District, within CFD 27, that staff is proposing to spend the funds on. We're hoping to generate maybe about 14.5 million in proceeds. Everything is dependent on interest rates, and obviously those are, are in flux right now. But we hope to go to market in July and, and close in July and, and generate as much revenue as we can for, for projects. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
All right, questions for Mr. Bloomberg? Yes.
Just tell me, understand, at the budget and cost impact, it says with one exception, the fees associated with the financing will be largely contingent upon a successful closing. But I just didn't, I didn't know if I, we needed to know what the exception was, or...
Good, good catch. We usually put that in the report, that the, in this case, the, the one cost, that's a sunk cost and not contingent is the appraisal of the undeveloped land in the Bridge District.
I think that was in there too, okay.
About $25,000.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Other questions or comments?
No.
Okay, seeing none. Okay, so this requires action. Is there a motion?
I'll move the recommended action.
I'll second.
We have a motion made, second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, hearing none. Motion passes. Thank you. Thank you, Paul. All right, next item is item number 17, is consideration of city's maintenance and operation budget for fiscal years 2017-18 and 2018-19. Mr. Sharma.
Mayor Protem, this would be Phil's item, but I'd like to go ahead and compliment Phil and Natish and our department heads and working with the council. This has been, in my five years, this has been our most difficult budget to balance because of the unexpected CalPERS increase that we were informed on November for a million in this upcoming fiscal year, and then 1.3 million in the second year of the two-year budget. So, this is a tough one for us. We've talked a lot about, about our unexpected revenue losses. Despite our gains in the city, this is a tough one for us to do. So, our process would be to get, propose this tonight, have it adopted, come back with the measure E allocations as a separate, completely separate from this on June 28. But this is a balance, proposed balanced budget. It doesn't include any increases in ONM, nothing for, in terms of additional employee increases. What we would hope of those, we're focused on economic development, raising new revenues as soon as that. If we are fortunate to have that increase in any substantial ways, be able to come back to the council and address the issue of employees at that time. So, with that, again, I'd like to thank Phil and the staff, particularly department heads, took a lot of time out of their regular duties to focus on putting together balanced budget for the city.
Thank you. Thank you, Marty. Appreciate it. And council, I'll try not to repeat some of the comments that our city manager made. Going to keep this relatively short, because as councils are aware, we did a lengthy workshop on the budget, May 24. Next slide. You'll recall we started that workshop showing you that without any adjustments, because of the cost that the city manager just identified, particularly the PERS increases of a million and a million three with the loss of other revenue, that we had a budget that was in the red by a million and, and, well, a million and a million three. And so, we had to solve that problem. Next slide. These are some of the key issues that I wanted to just reiterate. I think the city manager's done a pretty good job, and obviously the PERS increases, the budget does include the full payment of our retiree health contribution, the annual required amount to continue that commitment, the no ONM, the no additional cost. It, it does include the use of some flood assessment money for our flood plain management work. That's important to note, only because the flood assessment money's obviously controlled by the WSAFCA board. So, if they were to not approve that budget, we would have to come back and, and solve that problem. And as the city manager mentioned, we will, and we are already working on it, we'll be back to you on the 28th with a detailed recommendation for the use of the measure E money for your consideration. Next slide. So, when we came to the workshop, we had a plan that we had worked hard. I think I told you 20-some hours of meetings with my fellow department heads. The plan included some vacant positions, some reassigning, some realigned costs, and some new revenues. Just push the button. Thank you. So, the council had a lot of very good questions on many of the items, and they were discussed. And the one area was the landscaping and lighting moving it to measure K. It was about 330,000, and the council said that was not appropriate, that that really was not the, the intent of measure K. And we appreciated that direction. So, that was taken out. And as you can see, that creates a little bit of red on the top of our, our charts over there on the left. Next slide. So, we hear is our new approach to solve that 300-plus thousand-dollar problem. Number one is to, we, we went back to the department heads, just to give you a sense. We looked as, was there anything left in anybody's budget that we could really cut? And, and the bottom line is, there was, there was nothing of substance. And so, we just, the department heads decided, based upon direction from the city manager, that we were just going to share, and we were going to look at, you know, a little bit of cuts to all of us to try to get to the balanced budget. So, we reduced our ONM by about $127,000 in various departments. Next, we looked at some extra help budgets that weren't being completely spent, and we said, okay, we'll reduce some extra help budgets. So, police and fire and admin services all took some hits. We didn't have any additional increases in parks and rec, because if you recall, parks and rec got hit with the increase in the minimum wage January of this year. So, they already had to make adjustments, and they knew they were getting in others. So, they had made substantial cuts to their extra help. And remember that parks and rec is about 80% extra help. So, when they get hit with a minimum wage increase, it hits them across the board. Luckily, all of our extra help at the community center were paid for out of measure K, so we could absorb the extra help. At the rec center, we had to, we had to make cuts. And then finally, we looked at other contract reductions. And one of the things that we did is we looked very carefully at the lighting and landscaping district that created the problem, because as you remember, it has no escalator. And the most we could cut out, that was about 50,000. So, we cut $50,000 out of, out of those contracts. So, with these cuts, okay, that, that's a net of $333,700. So, that gets us back up into the black, as you will see in the next chart, not by a whole lot. you will see in the next chart, not by a whole lot. So 172,000 in the black in year one, 161 in the red in year two, so a $10,000 window. So we, we'll need to be very careful in making sure we stick to our budget, that we keep our expenditures under control as we've been doing very, you know, religiously with, you know, council direction and, and just, I think, all, and our city manager direction and all the department heads and our management staff and our rank and file. We've gotten pretty used to paying close attention to how many pencils and pieces of paper and paper clips, you name it, it all matters. And, and so we're pretty used to that. So there are some people at $10,000 black, we would look and say there's, they're going to blow this budget apart. That won't happen with the staff you have here. We will, if we have 10,000, we'll stick with the 10,000. Next slide. So that's how we balance the budget. And I think the most important thing to just express to the council is that, that these adjustments, the ONM adjustments, the extra help adjustments, what we ask each department head and which they, what they all committed to us is, is this going to negatively impact any key functions? And the, and the answer was no. We, we will, we will get the work done that needs to get done. Might have to be done slightly differently, a little more creatively. We were at a meeting with our executive team meeting and our city manager told us sometimes in these situations, you become the most creative. When you have no money, you have to figure out how to get the job done. So everybody feels comfortable that we can provide the services and the programs. Maybe some will take a little longer, be a little bit slower, or we'll have to be more creative. But there's nothing here that's going to cause the city not to be able to provide the services to the citizens and the businesses. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions. All right, yes. Councilmember Roscoe.
Thank you. Phil, with respect to the learning ladder budget, I, I was looking, and some of my questions had already been answered, so I just wanted to limit it to...I noticed that it said we, we may not fund two vacant positions. And I'm wondering, I know that in each of the classrooms, there's a, three, three full-time teachers. If we don't fund the two full-time equivalents of those teachers, is that going to affect in some way the student-to-teacher ratio? Or is this just, were these just vacant positions outside of the three per classroom?
These were, these were vacant positions and we are going, we've increased the part-time teachers. And, and the advantage there is we can keep the ratio of the teachers. But as you know, the general support allocation for the finance and HR and city manager's offices based upon full-time positions. So partly by reducing and having more part-time positions, it'll reduce their general support allocation costs or reduces their overall costs while still allowing them to provide the same level of service. This is also, as I think some of the council remembers, we had part-time staff running this program for many, many years and very limited full-time. And so we're really just tweaking it back a little bit in that direction. Not all the way to where it was. There's still more full-time staff than we had at the beginning, but really supplementing our staff with more part-time staff.
And with respect to the community center extra help, I mean, are we, is there going to be any change in the complexion of the programming that's happening in the active aging or any of the programs at the, at the community center?
No, we, we've been fortunate again, as I indicated earlier, because Measure K pays for the community center, we'll actually be able to keep that staffing. Where, where you've seen it, and I think some of you go to the rec center. So there are some swimming classes on a couple afternoons that are not as, not as robust as they were before. And it's important to note that the Parks and Rec staff took a long time and did program-based budgeting. So they really, they didn't just look at dollars. They looked and said, which classes have the most people and which ones are coming the closest to paying for themselves or are paying for themselves. So they tried to be very, very thoughtful and, you know, here's a class that has three people. Sort of similar to our bus routes, right? There's two people on the bus, maybe that's not the best route. There's two people in this class, maybe that's a class we don't have.
Well, with the rec center childcare, is that going to be supplemented by Measure K or is, is that going to be diminished in some way?
No, the rec center, one of the things that I think you'll remember, well, I apologize you weren't here. So we talked about this at the May 24th, that because the childcare in the rec center and some of the functions in the community center were after Measure K had passed, we're going to utilize some of the excess Measure K money to make sure those don't get reduced. And, and the council approved the use of that. It's, it's a fairly minimal amount.
And so will some of the cuts to the programming at the rec center include group exercise classes in addition to the swimming ones that you referenced?
I would have to look to my Parks and Rec director to answer that question. I probably have it here, but she can answer quicker.
Actually, no. The major cuts is to Tuesday and Thursday lap swimming. Both the AM and PM segments will be cut. You'll still be allowed to lap swim on Tuesdays and Thursdays from 9:00 AM to 4:00 PM, when we also have swim lessons and other programs that help to support paying for those lifeguards. And then the other major cut in programming is for adult rock climbing. We're also like cutting some staff at the back gate, an AM person. So there's just some minor adjustments like that. But the two major programming cuts is Tuesday, Thursday lap swim and adult rock climbing.
Thank you, Ms. Tuttel.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you, Cindy.
That's all.
Okay. Oh, Councilmember DeSantis?
Thank you. I don't have any questions because you've done a very good job, Phil, and, and the team of presenting this to us. And I appreciate the adjustment you've made in this budget after our conversation on the 24th around the, the lighting districts. And that's something that, again, I know you're, that's another issue that we'll have to solve for downstream. So I, I know you won't because we have to fund it, right? So we'll figure out how to, how to get to that. But I do want to take, take a moment to just thank the, the staff and the, the leadership on this budget. It's, it's difficult sometimes sitting up here and watching you have to go through and, and you're leading a group of people that work very hard day-to-day. And they're fulfilling our vision of the city and the services we need, basic services as well as services that aid and, and further other city goals. And while it's a difficult exercise that you've gone through, I, I have full faith in your leadership. And you've shown it here because you've gone through each and every one of you and have sharpened your pencils and looked for ways to adapt. And I agree with the city manager, I mean, his, his wisdom in this things, that sometimes these sort of budget issues bring great clarity to what you're doing. Sometimes they can be the mother of, necessity is the mother of all invention. And I think those opportunities may be assuming, maybe, may not be apparent today, but they will be at some point. And I think as we go through and, and again, as we, we've been in a very, very, the city has been on great momentum for some time now since the post-recession era. But it's just, I know staff isn't seeing it. And I think councilmember Sandine, Sandine at the last city council meeting brought up that we really need to, to focus on our economic development efforts, to find ways to drive revenue. That's something that to a large extent we can control, to some extent we can control with a great deal of work and leadership in that area. We can't control CalPERS and their projections process and laying these things on us. But looking at a, at a budget that has basically a $10,000 positive variance at the end of year two, while may not in normal times give me a great deal of confidence, all of you do to me. And that's to your word, that's the point that I'll look to. You guys have done a phenomenal job of leading to this point and led by the city manager. I know it's been painful and it's been tough. No one expected the CalPERS to bring this to us. But at least you have my commitment that we know staff has driven us to our successes, a large degree to our successes where we are. And that's not lost only to me. And as we move forward in this fiscal year and the coming fiscal years, having opportunities that make sense that, that, but in, in short, bring about maybe some possible lift for our employees because those who deserve it, those who have performed and those that meet all the criteria that, that you lay out there to them, I'm, I'm more than open to that. And I think that's the least we can do when our role is to understand who makes the city go on a day-to-day basis. And, but I just want to say, I appreciate the efforts in this budget. I know it was painful and I know it was difficult. But I would ask you to kind of reach, reach in once again and, and think about the opportunities that may be ahead. I, I want to say too, to, around your examples in this Parks Department, I'm looking at it as a needs-based budget or a programmatic look and not just a dollar. You really, that's the clarity sometimes that that brings. Where are we providing the most value? And it comes down to that dollar. And I think if we can stay in that mode, and we have been, I know we have been, I think our, I think our future is very, very bright. And if we can continue to find some wins in our city for economic development, I know this council will be ready to respond. So, thank you, Phil, and thank you to the leadership team.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Sandine?
Yeah, Mr. DeSantis pretty much took the words right out of my mouth. I, I think we weren't, we weren't expecting to be here. If we were, if we were going to, having the conversation last year and looking forward, we'd be all excited about, you know, how we're going to spend a couple more million perhaps. And then we have the CalPERS obligations, which are, which are really important for us to deal with and handle. And so I too commend the, the leadership city manager, the department heads and, and all of our staff. Because this, this is everyone's livelihood and work and people are giving it their all for West Sacramento. And so I, I'm, I'm really grateful for, for that work, especially because this was, this was so unexpected. And to Mr. DeSantis' point, this is, we're going to have to be really careful with every, as you mentioned, that's already happening, Mr. Wright, to every single expenditure to have a, to have a multimillion dollar budget come down to a $10,000 at the second years. And I know, I, I believe I know we can do that. And, and I do encourage the, and I know we all, we all encourage the diversification of potentially other additional revenues that are, that are out there for us to consider. And I, I'm hopeful, but I, I'm grateful. So I'm, I'm hopeful and grateful, and this is incredibly sobering, but I, I appreciate all the work that's been done. And I know these weren't easy discussions and your 20-plus hours and then probably 20-plus more hours of getting this together for us. So, so thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, I'd like to reiterate the comments of my council members, but I just wanted to go through the process. I think last meeting when we kind of laid down kind of the philosophy that Measure K isn't going to be used for this, we did up here, I think, feel a certain tenseness in staff and how are we going to do this? But we never really had the impression or the feeling that it was, we can't do that. It was, yes, we can do that. What's the problem? Let's go fix it, we'll come back. So, you know, it's that kind of attitude that really, I think it's, makes it really enjoyable for us to, to be, be able to represent the city and all the way from the city manager to you, Phil, to Natish and to all the department heads who sat down and, and looked at this on a dollar-for-dollar basis to try and come up with this money and to come up a solution that works. And it's, it's really great. And yeah, it is a $10,000 budget at the end of two years. But, you know, we, we do have things that are kind of percolating. They're, they're not there yet. This isn't a dead economy. Things are moving. It's just, like, it could be faster. And I think we all are cognizant of the fact that we know the situation the employees are in. We know it's a very competitive job market and not only government circles, but private sector. And we know we, we need to respect the people that are making this city work. So definitely as we look forward to, as the situation changes, revenues start popping in, I definitely think it's, at least it sounds like we've got an appetite really to take a look at that, at that time, come back for review, I'm not sure, six months or something along that line. And we can kind of see what we can do to, to help the employees because we all realize that, you know, it's probably been since the recession that people are still doing things they weren't really hired to do. And they're stressed and, and they're working, you know, very hard and they're, they're producing results that we want to see. And so, you know, we've got to be able to find a way to reward staff for that effort. So we're just seeing the community how well well this city, the perception of the city running in the region. So, I mean, it's all really the staff and the management that's doing this. So really appreciate it. Thank you. All right. So it looks like there's a recommended action to adopt this budget.
So moved.
A motion made. Motion made and seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post, hearing none. Motion passes. Thank you all. All right, on to the last item, item 18, consideration of the city's biennial capital improvement budget for fiscal year 2017, 18, and fiscal year 2018, 19, and five-year capital improvement plan for fiscal year 2019, 20, through fiscal 2021 and 2022. Natish?
Mr. Mayor Protam, members of the council, today we are recommending the city council to adopt the biennial capital improvement budget for fiscal years 2017, 18, and 2018, 19. On May 24th, 2017, staff presented to council the draft CIP budget for council direction. Next slide, please. This slide illustrates a total of $43.4 million dollars of project requests in 1718 and about $13.2 million in 1819. Majority of the projects, as you can see, is water fund and bridge district fund. And we actually, the council just adopted the utility rate study, so most of the projects, water projects are listed there. Next slide, please. So there are only one change in the proposed by council was to add the Bright Park play structure, the new shade structure for Kaboom. And we actually are including this as part of the biennial budget to be funded by the unrestricted fund balance in Measure K fund. Next. And these were some of the other major projects that were presented to council on that day. That concludes our presentation. I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
All right, questions or comments?
I'm really excited, thank you, about the, the shade structure at Bright Park. I know that we were all very excited as a community several years ago when, when we brought the Kaboom Park here and all of us took charge and built together this fantastic gem on the north side of our community. As a mom and someone who takes advantage of the park, I know I speak for, for many other parents when, you know, you start to swelter under the heat and, you know, you just, hey kids, it's time to go. Because after 15 minutes of this, it's like you can't stand it anymore. So I know that's been a, a recurring concern from the community and, and I'm really excited that that will be forthcoming and represented in our budget.
Thank you. Yes?
My, my only comment is I'm, I, I'm supportive of this movement forward. I'm looking forward also to the discussion at our next meeting about Measure E as we dig into, to that. And I, and I understand it's, it's separated out, but I'm looking forward to that discussion as well.
Yes.
Councilmember DeSantis?
Thank you, Mayor Protam. Thanks, Natish, for the work on this. You know, in looking through the projects you just laid out, and yeah, I'm excited about the Bright Park too. But it really does reflect our priorities. It really does reflect what I think, what I think the residents expect of the city these days in a lot of different areas from our aspirations. We have an I-street bridge conversion. That, right? That would be a great amenity for the riverfront. But it also, some basic stuff, Parks Master Plan is in there. So it, it stuff, it kind of touches on all the corners of our priorities of a city council. And the same on Measure V where we're committing, again, that the streetcar is making great progress somehow, where that, that has great momentum and we're committing to it. And then you go down and you can see the less, everything is, is in its right place. So I, I appreciate the work being done on this and glad that this is, we have the right prioritization. You see it and you're moving it forward. So thank you.
Thank you. Anything further? All right, thank you. Yeah, I think one of the things that we heard at this conference that we attended last week was the issue of inclusiveness and how important it is to, when you go through projects like this, to make sure the whole city benefits from, from improvement in one way or another. And we've had this issue for, for years and originally Brighton-Broderick community, the action plan, moving into the park and now moving into structures like this, the Sycamore Trail. So to try to really work on capital improvement budgets that just don't benefit one particular part of the city but are, are spread out throughout the city, I think it's really, really important. So good job at this. All right, so we've got, I think there's a motion on this as well?
So moved.
Seconded.
Okay, we have a motion made and seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, hearing that, motion passes. Thank you very much. All right, on to council calendar.
Good evening, Mayor Protam-Johansson and members of the city council. There are a couple of items that are coming up that might be of interest to you. Next Monday is the start of our Summer Steps internship program, and that runs through August 11th. And on June 28th, some of the interns will be coming to the council meeting, so you'll be able to see them, and we'll introduce you to the crew. And then on Friday, June 23rd, is the graduation for the Police Youth Academy. And that's it?
What was the date of the?
June 23rd.
I'm sorry, Amanda, when was the Summer Steps program beginning?
It starts on Monday, June 19th.
Is there a particular program that's going to be occurring?
There'll be a little reception in the morning for an orientation, but it's mainly just for staff-level orientation, and then they'll come to the council meeting on June 28th, so you get to meet some of them.
Thank you.
Sure.
Okay. All right, thank you. City manager report.
No report, but thank you on behalf of the staff for the nice comments. Appreciate that.
All right, thank you. City attorney report.
City attorney report.
Thank you. Staff direction from city councilmembers?
I have no staff direction, but I have a comment.
Okay.
Not too long ago, maybe earlier this week, I received some communications from the rec center, and I was really proud to see, because I just had a conversation with Phil Wright about all of the potential with our rec center and having a party at the, a pool party for our Little League end-of-the-year party. And I just saw that there was a flyer that was advertising some of the programs and also the summer pool party opportunities. And it maybe had been there before, but it's the first time that I saw it, and I was really happy with the rec center really advertising that to our community, because a lot of folks ask that. And I feel like, as a, you know, as a parent, I feel like I'm relatively integrated and know a lot about the programs that are going on in the city, but I didn't know how to answer that before. And so thank you for the outreach to the community with respect to some of the things that we can do, including renting places like the Boathouse and, you know, and really enjoying the amenities in our community. But the first step is having access and knowing how to go about doing that, and you made that very clear. So thank you very much, Ms. Tuttle, and to the city.
Thank you. All right, then we have a future agenda I request. Councilmember Sandine.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Protam-Johansson. I, without objection, I would like to request that we consider a support of the Beriasa Snow Mountain National Monument letter on our next agenda. It's under review by executive order, all of the, I believe, many of the national monuments that were recently designated, and that was designated on July 10th, 2015, after seven years of work. And we supported it, our council supported the movement towards the national monument designation. So I believe that the organization, Tulio Me, is looking to collect letters of support. And because we have that already in our history as a council, I just wanted to ask if we could put that on our next agenda.
All right. Any objection?
Thanks.
All right. You have direction? Okay, thank you. All right, then we need to adjourn. Is there a motion?
So moved.
A motion made?
Seconded.
Seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, hearing that, sure, thank you.
Charles Martin.